And the principal was keen on that?
We've had other groups come to the Guildhall, including from Long Road. But yeah, I mean, we haven't been asked by the principal.
There's a new principal there now.
Yeah, then hopefully she's seen this film and then we will say yes.
And as East Area, we can offer the, you know, the proposal that we have, you know, members are, or a small number of members would happily come again if that was something they felt useful to the students.
I'd certainly be willing to go again.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. So that'd be an action point then, won't it? Yeah, that we contact the new principal and say we're happy to come back again in light of the perceived success of the previous visit? That's one of the councils you might say.
Well, I'll pick the issue up. I mean, we, there is an unused community notice board on, I think, Cowper Road, but the, yeah, we'll have a look. I mean, there are a couple of mysteries that the committee needs to get to the bottom on, and one of those is what's happened to the bus shelters, which we'd agreed along on that road. So I think there's a couple, it's just a question of where we can put them. I mean, if, I'll put it the way of the people doing environmental improvements and see if we can get some options. So it's useful, but then we, we need to then link them in with the update notices that go out to places like Parkside Bull, Coleridge Rec's got a notice board, a number of other places. So I'll take it up and I'll get back to Mr Cole then.
Yes, I know they're still wrestling with trying to come up with a design for a bus shelter site set up at the stop near the carpet shop, which has about a four-foot pavement or five-foot pavement, which is quite problematic, but I'll leave you to follow that up, Councillor Herbert. And just for the two others' benefit, councillor Smith has agreed to take up the approach to Coleridge as an action point as vice chair. So that's, thank you for that, Hannah. Right, do you have any other questions for the audience before I ask the resident of Maltings Close to, yes please? Would you like to introduce yourself for the purposes of the minutes, please?
Yes, I'm Nikki Marion, sorry, from the Friends of Coleridge Rec. And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for all the improvements that have taken place at the rec. But I'd like to note that that leads to increased use and there are still known loos during the winter. I understand that this is because of asbestos in the loos, so it's better to drain them down than to try and insulate them and keep them open, but it does cause a problem for all the children who are trying to use the park. And I'd like to ask if it would be possible to install some sort of temporary loo that could be used in the winter and it would add capacity in the summer. If we can't address the existing ones, let's just do something different. And while we're on the subject, may I just quickly say that it's great that the debris left by all the improvements has finally been cleared, but there's still a huge gap in the fencing, which is a big problem for children, and the fencing seems to have disappeared. So I don't know what's happening there, but it would be good to have that sort of looked at. And just the last comment is that it used to be, and there is still one sign that says no cycling in the park, but the rest of the signs have gone and there's quite a lot of cycling, which doesn't, from adults, which is, makes it difficult for the kids. And it's a bit unnecessary because the roads around it, you know, there's no cut through. It doesn't save anybody time, they're just in the park rather than on the roads around. So I think that would benefit from being looked at.
Okay, three parts to that question. I'll, councillor Roberts, you probably have answered the first part and councillor Herbert, perhaps with the other points.
Okay, in terms of the public conveniences, as things currently stand, the toilets across the city, obviously depending on their location, some are open all year round, some are open at certain points during the year. We have a review coming to committee in a few months' time actually about toilets across the city, and there'll be potentially a range of recommendations ranging from looking at our provision on open spaces, in particular because we're quite keen with public conveniences on open spaces, which we think are amongst the most important public conveniences the city provides, that we look at a whole range of things from opening times amongst other things. So what I'll do is, that review's, the office is currently in the process of doing it, including with the Silver Street toilets, which you might have read about in the newspaper and different things. If you could put those comments essentially to me in an email and I will make sure they're fed into the review as, and then it comes back, I believe in June, I think, to committee. But as things currently stand, at present, as a city authority, we spend truly astronomical amounts of money on public conveniences, more so than almost any other council per head in the whole of the UK. We have more public conveniences than, I believe Nottingham, Birmingham, Nottingham's got 21 blocks, we've got 20, I believe. I think they've got one more than us. So you get, you get the feeling for a similar sized area to Bath, and Bath had more or less the same numbers of conveniences as us, and they went through a similar sort of process of looking at rationalising what they had and working out what needs to be, what's in very good locations, what needs to be made the most of, hence why the company are going through the process with Silver Street and rebuilding, because it is one of the most used public conveniences, the ones from public spaces are the most used public conveniences. So that instead of rebuilding loos that people don't use, there's one in my ward, Barnmore Road, which most people don't know about.
We'll stick to Coleridge Rec though, please, councillor Roberts.
Yes, sorry, I'm sorry, if you email me about that, then I will, I will make sure. I could talk about toilets all day long.
His girlfriend is a very lucky woman.
But I, I could, I will feed it in, and what I'll also do is I'll email you when it's due at committee, so you can come and address committee with your concerns. And just one last point, regardless of asbestos, I honestly don't know, I'll ask. I don't think that is the case. I would be surprised. I think it's more to do with just, we do shop public loos in the winter, based on usage.
That's councillor Peter Roberts, for the benefit of your.
Yes, thank you.
Well, Jeremy's going to talk about loos, I think. Coleridge loos.
Yes, picking up on, picking up on what councillor Roberts was saying about the actual situation at Coleridge Rec toilets. My understanding is it was an asbestos issue and I would like to scotch that one straight away. What it is, as those of us who know that building well, it's not one of the most modern buildings in the world and it was prone to freezing up, and so in the winter it was closed down so that the pipe, and drained down, and the, so that the pipes didn't explode and needed a lot of work to put them right afterwards. There were other reasons why the toilets were closed at different times of the year, but we seemed to have got over the other issues that were going on in and around Coleridge Rec then. I think the public open spaces that we've got, somebody circulated on the email the other day, an interesting photograph, looking down across Hills Road, over the railway lines, across Coleridge and into the far distance of Abbey. And though it looked a very green and pleasant area, the actual only piece of actual public open space in that photograph was Coleridge Rec, and it provides a very big service in that particular area, area of the city. I've often said this at these meetings, but we councillors think in terms of ward boundaries and the public dung, and that, and Coleridge Rec does serve a very, very, very large area. Hence, the amount of investment that's been put into it recently to upgrade, upgrade the facilities, I will certainly be pressing for the toilets to, and as I have done with councillor Roberts in the past, pressing for the toilets to be upgraded, and in the hope that they could be a 12-month facility. There may be other ways that that could, that could be achieved, but in the summer months, in the winter months, Coleridge Rec is very popular with young children, in the summer it's very popular with older people, older people as well. And speaking as somebody who is an older person, the, it might, 21 public toilets may seem an awful lot, but sometimes they're an awful long way apart.
Okay, so you've got to answer the two other points.
Well, just, yeah, one councillor's were at the rec last week, not to use either the toilets or play tennis, but we, we noticed the problem with the, with the sort of contractors' area with still some rubble, so we speeded that up, but we take your point about the fence, so we'll follow that up. There is still a, a small amount of the improvement money remaining, so in addition to wanting to remove ivy and stop trees falling over that are completely uncovered in it, and opening up the entrance, if the friends or other people locally have got any suggestions, that are sort of, including addressing your signage issue, which I've noted, then, then do drop us a line, because it's not a huge sum of money, but there's a few thousand left just to make some minor improvements.
May I say that actually that the entrance needs a lot of work because it's terribly overgrown and it actually doesn't feel very safe because you can't see going into it who might be learning.
In addition to that, sorry, Chair, but I thoroughly endorse that, and also it is, as councillor Ben said, was referring to an aerial photo, well, from the ground on Coleridge roadside, you can't actually see the park. So I think people would actually see that it's a lovely open area and be attracted more into it, as well as, as you say, removing something that's an eyesore.
Okay, so that will happen. Councillor Roberts, you want to come back very quickly, hopefully?
Sorry, yeah, sorry. If you, when you email me, if you could include, if you include that issue and I'll take on the fence issue from councillor Herbert, simply because it's the same officer who'll be dealing with.
Very happy, very happy.
Who'll be dealing with the same issue in relation to the toilets, it's the same overarching officer that would deal with both. And then thirdly, on your point about the, I'm hoping you'll stay for the point where Wendy Young, who works for the councillor, her team's to the public realm issues, and I'm sure councillor Herbert will offer up that entrance issue with the overhanging and so on as one of the priorities for Coleridge for an environmental improvement, which Wendy will then take up with her team.
Councillor Campbell, do you still want to come back?
Well, it was just a couple of things. I'm really pleased to hear the positive contributions about the toilets, because I have raised them in the past. Because one thing I did notice, Nightingale Avenue has a park there and the toilets seem to be open during the winter, and also Cherry Hinton Park. So I think I'd like to have a kind of consistency within our territory on toilets. The other thing we have invested in is the new tennis courts at Coleridge Park, which are really well used even in the winter, and that's another reason to get some toilets in there. And I think that was a great suggestion, have a temporary toilet, in the meantime, while we're waiting for funds to do a proper job. There were new signs invested for the tennis courts. Unfortunately, you know, there are people using those tennis courts for other activities rather than tents. In fact, I remember I did answer a group who came here, they're called polo cyclists, and they were saying, they were saying they wanted, they wanted a place to use, but unfortunately they're starting to use our tennis courts. And I've become a kind of surrogate parkkeeper, I'm getting a bit fed up, getting turf and people off. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councillor Herbert, last one, this question please.
No, tell me.
Sorry.
Now, I was just going to say, I think I mentioned last time, a scheme that's been quite successful elsewhere, which is rather than building lots of public loos, is persuading pubs and hotels, restaurants and other places to allow the general public to use their facilities. And I mean, I think that's perhaps more in rural areas, but certainly in the area where I come from originally, as I was, there are quite a lot of pubs that have done that. And, you know, it does seem to me to be, if we can encourage people to do that, it says a building, well, a lot of loos.
Yes, there's plenty of pubs in Coleridge, by the way. Anyway, that's some local, local knowledge. Martin, you had your hand up, you still want to ask a question?
Yes.
Mr Lucas Smith?
Two quick questions. Firstly, as you all know, or probably have noticed, Mill Road is about to receive a Sainsbury's, which I'm sure is very heavily under demand, given the shortage of places selling food. I happen to be on Mill Road about a year ago and came across Pizza Hut delivering to their premises, basically blocking the road for about half an hour, with drivers having actually waited about 10 minutes, I think, you know, being stuck on Mill Road. And the operatives were basically saying, oh, the company will pay the 60 quid fine. And it seems to me that that kind of activity is completely inappropriate. Obviously it creates a lot of safety issues, it also delays people, whether they're cyclists or motorists, obviously. I wonder whether councillors would be in favour of police actually booking such vehicles for obstruction and taking much action, rather than just treating this as a kind of, you know, traffic warden, 60 quid kind of issue. Because it was, I mean, I've got the video on YouTube, which I could circulate, but it was really quite atrocious. So that was the first question. Secondly, this is a question with Petersfield councillors. I just wanted to ask whether Petersfield councillors live or ever walk around Petersfield. I live on York Street and about a month ago, two months ago, a proposal to put a gate between York Street and the Beehive Centre was proposed, which blatantly was completely stupid, because it would mean that everyone who cycles there would have to squeeze through a one-metre gap, along with pedestrians carrying, shopping and so on. I mean, I just cannot understand how such a proposal went that far without someone seeing the very obvious problem there. So could I just have an explanation as a matter of public record as to how on earth that ridiculous proposal got there? And thankfully, I, I mean, there was no consultation, despite the fact that probably thousands of people go through there. I happen to live locally, found it and raised it with the officer, but could I have some, an answer, please, from the Petersfield councillor?
I'll answer the second part, yeah, who would, councillor?
I don't know if Mr Lucas Smith has ever met Richard Wood of Perron Street, who is a one-man crusade for a traffic regulation order to stop pavement parking, to stop pavement parking on Mill Road. I think it might be worthwhile, because this is, as you might imagine, a perennial issue for the committee, if I get an officer note written on, you know, the pros and cons, the viability of a TRO, because presumably, well, we can find out in the next item, perhaps we might want to raise it in the next item, but I presume there would have to be a TRO for the police to book, so that would have to be the first step. But we can take, presumably, with your advice, Chair, take side of orders advice on that.
That could be.
Not on pavement parking, was it?
You may wish to ask a question under the next item, so.
Yeah, I think it's probably better.
Okay, in terms of York Street, Martin, we've had some correspondence, obviously, with this. So I had a request from residents in York Street that back onto roadwalk, in terms of a lot of tension and friction that was occurring, particularly in late summer, early autumn, and there was almost an altercation at one point whereby the area concerned has become known to be a free parking facility for all sorts of people, residents who back onto that lane, as it were, it's not, it's not an adopted road, it's a lane at the back of their houses, we're getting fed up with. So I tried to sort of assist the situation by trying to get a solution put forward. Clearly, the suggested location of the gate originally was certainly not thought through. I think I do know who suggested it, but I won't mention names because I'm not 100% sure that was the case, but certainly alerted by yourself and others, and one or two of us had a closer look as to what was proposed and obviously told them to hold fire and let's find a more suitable location. So apologies on behalf of myself for not spotting that earlier, and it should have been thought through a lot more strategically, rather than just as a local level matter. And I think that was the issue, there was a desire to do something quicker without actually enough thought as to what was the longer term implication.
Thank you.
But obviously that was changed and this problem obviously was a serious problem and it was causing a lot of friction and a solution has been put in place, and we'll see if that deals with the issue. But I'll certainly apologise on behalf of those, because I was involved in the discussion myself and didn't spot it early enough. In terms of, yeah, we're going to hold the second one back to the next item, yeah? So the Councillor's Secretary has explained to me that the resident of Maltings Close had submitted a question but wanted me to read it out, I wasn't. And I know various members have seen it and it is a long question. I'm just trying to think if I could summarise it in a shorter way, but essentially it refers to, this is on behalf of a resident in Maltings Close who says they're representing other residents in Maltings Close. I do prefer to have a name to any question that's asked of this committee or any committee for that rank, but as it seems, a genuine question, I will put it to the committee. I would like to bring the attention of this forum, East Area Committee. The piece of land behind the Lepper Chapel is called the Chapel Meadows and proposed to be part of the route for the Chisom Trail. It has three important designations, it's a city wildlife site, part of the inner greenbelt and part of a historical conservation area. Expert reports and council policy documents require that it should be protected, protected and preserved, hence not developed in any way, it is currently understood by public access. I and other residents are incredulous that in the recent consultation, the facts of this land as three designations were not given to the public, anywhere in the background information. That was A. B, instead, information in this section of the route was highly skewed, presenting only positive views about the opportunities created. C, the facts which were admitted would have a significant effect upon whether the public supported or opposed this section of the route. And I think I have other concerns about the scope of the survey, and that was the consultation that went through all the, certainly all the doors in Abbey, because I got one through my door, being very clear to the public and that there was unequal treatment of stakeholders who were likely to have concerns about the use of the Chapel Meadows. For the benefit of members of the Councillor's, not familiar with Abbey, Maltings Close is one of the new cul-de-sacs of Ditten Walk that look out over, well, in effect, the meadows before the chapel, yeah. I think that gives a gist of the question, there is a little bit more, but I'm conscious that that's probably enough information I've given to elicit a reply from the Ward Councils, particularly you are, who have seen the full question. I know there is a list here that have seen the full question, there's probably three or four, at least on the Councillor's, you haven't, but I've got a copy here. Councillor Johnson, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, just, I'll just give my view on the, on the issue, and I thank you very much to the residents of Maltings Close, who, Maltings Close, who's attended this evening and I, I have actually spoken to her before and I've met with her before, so I'm aware of her issues. But in terms of the Chisom Trail, it needs to be just the route. I personally believe that the route as proposed is acceptable and I think it respects that achieving the difficult, it meets the, achieving the difficult balance between respecting an actual environment, the heritage of East Kimball and Abbey, and providing an important route, linking Abbey up with the north and north-east end zone of the city. But I do understand and do respect the differences of opinion here and I know the concerns expressed. And I've got a response here from Mike Davie, who is the Cycling Projects Officer of the County Council. He acknowledges, in response to the question submitted, he says he acknowledges the area as a conservation area, a greenbelt and wildlife site. However, these distinctions don't necessarily mean the area is unsuitable for a new cycle path. Mr Davies reaffirms that the area is subject to, that the area for the route is subject to planning permission, and that councillors and officers will need to carefully consider the scheme proposed. In terms of wildlife, ecological surveys are being undertaken to identify the present situation, which will feed into the planning process. In terms of the process, the consultation, the question that, the consultation process insisted was unfair, I've got, the consultation questions were designed with input from City Deal Transport Communications Team, the Cambridge Research Group and the Cycling Projects Team. And prior to the public consultation, the projects team met with the majority of landowners and tenants along the route. A stakeholder briefing was held prior to the consultation, this was focused at groups and organisations, and included groups that are not supportive of the proposed route, including Friends of Coleridge Common and Friends of Ditten Meadows. 10 and a half thousand homes received materials about the consultation, along with other communication channels and a store that's now which are. Maltings Close residents contacted the County Council midway through the consultation process, expressing their concerns and saying that they need more time and information to submit their views. I understand that John Grimshaw from the County Council visited Maltings Close residents to discuss proposals. So in terms of just wrapping up, the City Deal Board decided to forward the proposed plan for the Chisom Trail to, for planning, for planning application, and that planning process still needs to be, to be pushed through. So there's still time to make representations at that stage as well.
Okay, and I'll let councillor Smart come in, but just the three requests of us at the East Area, I've already explained this sort of background to the question. One, the request that my councillors, whether that person means my, in terms of Abbey councillors, I'm not sure if it's this, it's East Area, so we take it on board as East Area councillors, to take action to ensure a fair process in the consultation, and that, for example, what way specific survey results will be given in future decisions. I think there are probably councillors on this committee who have quite an input into the, dealing with the assessment and analysis of the consultation, as do all councillors in the effect, in the area where this part of the route is envisaged, and I'm sure they will give their hearing to all the points that are raised, either for or against the section of the route under discussion. That's, I think that's, needs to be said. The second, it refers to, I request my councillors to explain the apparent infringement of council policy in developing this land, i.e. the Chapel Meadows, when there are exonerative routes available. Clearly, any proposals resulting from a recommendation at the end of the consultation period will take into account council policies, planning and otherwise, and will have to work within those. And clearly, parts of the city have designations, conservation area status and the like, and they are all part of the deliberations when you discuss the sort of the practical side of all this, and that will be done. And obviously, policies are important and will be part of that balance. And the second one, I think I'd also ask my councillors for details of which stakeholders were contacted before the consultation. I think there was a stakeholders' meeting, which all the known residents associations in the area were invited to. It may well be that Maltings Close is something, is a residence group that isn't known on the database of, in the city or the county, because it's a fairly new residential development, and we must ensure that that group is included in any future consultations about anything that's happening within their sort of vicinity. I think that may well be, look at the crux of that particular issue, they probably weren't formally invited at that stakeholder meeting, which is, again, apologies if that was the case, but that may well be because the database wasn't as up to date as it should be. Councillor Smart?
It was exactly that point I wanted to go back to, because I was one of those that was sent this email. Obviously, a residence group so near the trail should have been in part one of the stakeholders, and I just wonder, are they in touch with FECA, are they on the list? Is the county using the list that the city has? Can we be sure that in those, in these consultations, and we've got a bit of a flurry of consultations going on at the moment, that our, the residence list, residence group's list is up to date? I don't know, I mean, I think, this is, this is obviously, they, I suspect they weren't on the list, as you say, it's a new, it's a new development. Can we have, perhaps, ought we to have a bit of publicity to get residents associations onto our list? But fundamentally. But fundamentally, is the county liaising with the city? Because on the whole, the city has a reasonable list of, of residence groups, are the county using that list?
Councillor Cameron, I think there is a list that's across both, uh, city and county, but perhaps you'd like to, uh?
Yeah, well, to my understanding, uh, thi- this group were actually visited by, you know, John.
Yeah, but later, later.
No, but they, they've been fully aware of all the proposals as all these people have been sent the, the letters, you know, in the thousands. So, no, they, they had a personal visit from, uh, Mr Grimshaw, who was actually the consultant who's been, um, acting on behalf of the County Council to put together, uh, proposals for the City Deal. He's also been negotiating with all the landowners and he's been doing a, a very, very good job in coming up with a trail that seems to be gaining wide acceptance. And, and this group are actually coming in quite late and they, as I said, they've already been consulted. Um, they've also had, I believe, some very positive proposals put to them so that they could actually benefit from having the trail going close to their, um, homes. Um, I'll also emphasise that the, um, Chism Trail is, is on the agenda at the next City Deal Assembly meeting. So all stakeholders, everyone who has an interest in the trail will have an opportunity to come and, um, make their views known there. And as you know, the assembly is not a decision making assembly. Um, the decisions will be made later on by the executive of the City Deal. And then we also have the planning officer involved. So, um, they haven't, they, they haven't been overlooked. They've had every opportunity to be involved and they have been involved, so.
And there will be, obviously, opportunities to comment at further stages of the process as well.
Yep.
Okay, I thought we had a fairly good.